Hello, everyone. I'm Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager of the Town of Shrewsbury. We wanted to take the opportunity to provide all residents and town meeting members a preview of the October 16th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Warrant. I'll be joined today by a number of department heads and department employees of the town to talk about various warrant articles that will be included in the Town Meeting Warrant, which will include nine articles for consideration on the evening of October 16th. I'm joined now by Assistant Town Manager for Administration of Finance, David Snowden, and we're going to walk through the first four warrant articles that are on that agenda before we're joined by another guest. Welcome, Dave.
Thank you.
So Dave, the first warrant article, which I'll read is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the Treasury a sum of money to amend various departmental appropriations for the fiscal year 2024 operating budget or to take any other action in relation thereto. The motion that we've set forth for that article is I move that the town raise the sum of $335,210 from taxation and appropriate the same to various departments, specifically as set forth below, adding $106,500 to the Personnel Board Budget, adding $104,000 to the Finance Committee, and adding $124,710 to the Fire Department. Dave, could you just take a couple minutes and let's start with the Personnel Board Adjustment of $106,500? What is the purpose of that adjustment?
Of course. The $106,500 is to support new salary schedules to enhance pay competitiveness to allow for better recruitment and retention for employees. Most specifically, we've seen this fiscal year some difficulties within the Planning and Economic Development Department, Library, the Department of Public Works, and the Police Department in retaining staff as these needs have led to the inability to fill vacant positions and we've had high turnover. And during exit interviews, we are finding that high wage opportunities in other communities are a main contributing reason.
Great. The second key part of this article is moving $104,000 into the Reserve Fund. So what is the Reserve Fund and why is this proposal to increase it by $104,000?
Excellent. The Reserve Fund is managed by the Finance Committee, and we use this for operational expenses that can be unforeseen throughout the fiscal year. Our policy is set to have a Reserve Fund of 5% of all expense accounts, and this $104,000 would bring us to that reserve policy that we have set. We're anticipating some increases in legal counsel due to ongoing litigation and a cable franchise license agreement, which both have come to us since the annual town meeting.
Great. Thank you. And finally, there's a proposal to add $124,710 to the Fire Department Salary and Wage Line Item. What are some of the details behind this?
Of course. Of that total, $124,710, $18,500 are required to cover unanticipated costs associated with the settlement of a collective bargain agreement with the firefighter unions, and the remainder, $106,210, is to cover costs associated with one firefighter who is out injured on duty for this fiscal year.
Okay, great. So Dave, maybe you can talk just a little bit about what the source of these funding is. It says raise and appropriate through taxation. So when did these funds come about and how do we have this opportunity?
Yeah, yeah. These funds are available through the expansion of the tax base and higher-than-anticipated levels of local receipts and revenues, new growth being higher and what we anticipate our local receipts will be for the fiscal year.
Great. Thank you.
Yep. All right. We'll move on to Article Number Two.
Great.
All right. Article Number Two, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds in the Treasury a sum of money to the General Stabilization Account or take any other action in relation thereto." The proposed motion reads, "I move that the town raise and appropriate the sum of $596,166 from taxation for deposit into the General Stabilization Account. Our current balance is $4,794,720, and the revised balance with this would be $5,390,886." Yeah, would you be able to go into further detail on why we have the general stabilization and how this benefits the town?
So the Town's General Stabilization Fund is our rainy day fund that we would use in case of emergency of significant unforeseen expenses in the future. And we continue to work towards our policy-defined level of 5% of the total municipal and school operating budget. With this adjustment, we'd be getting closer to that, but still not there. This would take us to about 3.7%. Again, the policy level is 5%. So these funds are also coming in because of the expansion of the tax base and local receipts revenue. So pretty straightforward article. This is not the override stabilization fund. This is the general stabilization fund that is the true rainy day fund that doesn't have a specific purpose. So that takes us to Article Three, which is "To see if the town will borrow, raise, and appropriate, or transfer from available funds in the Treasury such sums of money as may be deemed necessary to fund the costs associated with amending the fiscal year 2024 capital budget." The proposed motion is that we move to raise and appropriate the sum of $350,000 from taxation to fund the costs associated with amendments to the capital improvement projects fiscal year 24. Dave, there's three specific categories that we're seeking to make additional investments in, and maybe you could walk through each of those briefly.
Of course. The first one is a school HVAC project where we will add temporary HVAC cooling on the top room floors at school buildings, which we'll use to service the schools for the next five to seven years. That amount comes to $250,000. The second category, again, would be adding building security for the school and municipal buildings at a cost of $35,000. And the last one would be our IT department for hardware and the amount of $65,000.
Great. So I know one of the key initiatives related to the HVAC investments is dealing with warmer-than-normal weather at the beginning and end of school years. Beginning of this school year, Dr. Sawyer actually had to shut down school for a half a day because of the high temperatures within the classrooms. So we're trying to make these investments to address that as we consider more appropriate long-term ways to handle this. All right.
Correct. All right. Article Four. Article Four reads, "To see if the town will vote to rescind a portion of the authorization to borrow for a new Beale Elementary School located at 214 Lake Street that has been completed, as it was unnecessary to borrow the full authorization or take any other action in relation thereto." The motion reads that I move that the town vote to rescind the excess amount of $40,655,000 authorized but unissued borrowing from Article Six of the October 22nd, 2018 Special Town Meeting for the purpose of constructing a new Beale Elementary School located at 214 Lake Street that has been completed. This is very interesting. Why would we want to rescind the borrowing? What benefits does this have for the town, Kevin?
So any MSBA project that we take on, we're required to demonstrate that we have the full appropriation locally here in the town. So that, when we talked about the passage of this article, when it was approved by Town Meeting, we did let Town Meeting members know that we didn't intend to borrow all of it. The reason that we're rescinding that borrowing authorization is because credit rating agencies like Standard &amp; Poor's, who we have a AAA bond rating through right now, see this as basically similar to a line of credit on a credit card, that if it's authorized but unborrowed, it exists, and they count it against our total debt limit, which we're allowed to borrow against. So by eliminating it, it essentially frees it up, takes it off our books. We have a lower amount of authorization on the books, and we're just seen more favorably by doing this financial housekeeping. So it's a simple action that pays great dividends whenever we seek our next bond rating.
All right. Excellent.
Yeah, so that takes us into Article Five for the Special Town Meeting of October 16th. And that article is with regards to lower interest on tax deferrals. Specifically, the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to set a lower interest rate for tax deferral and recovery agreements as provided in the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 5, Clause 18A and 41A, or take any other action in relation thereto." And the motion that has been prepared is I move the town vote to lower the interest rate for tax deferral and recovery agreements as provided in the Massachusetts General Laws, same sections as I've previously identified, from 8% to 4% with such reduced rate to apply to deferral and recovery agreements for assessed taxes for any fiscal year beginning on or after July 1, 2023. So that brings in Principal Assessor Ruth Anderson. Ruth, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
So could you talk a little bit about this? What is a tax deferral and why do we charge interest? And what is the proposed changes that we're seeking to make here?
Sure. Like any of our other exemptions that we offer, this is statutory, meaning it's in the law, and we have to offer this program. Essentially, if people are experiencing extreme financial hardship, either through a disability or their age and are bordering on poverty, we can defer their taxes, meaning they don't have to pay them right now. In order to protect the town, once that goes into effect, we do place a lien on the real estate, and that lien accrues interest over time. And the law says 8% or any other interest rate that's approved by the town. So this article is to lower that interest rate from 8% to 4%, just to not unduly burden people that enter into this program because they're already experiencing an extreme hardship.
Right. So how many properties are currently in deferral? And do you see any financial burden being placed on other taxpayers because of this?
So there's one property that's in deferral right now, and it's fairly recent. It's only been in the program for one year.
Okay.
So there is a cap that protects the town as well, so it's not like somebody could defer their taxes for 20 years. It's capped at 50% of the ownership interest. So if a house is assessed at $400,000, they can't defer $400,000 worth of tax. It could be $200,000. And the town, because of the lien that's placed on the property, the town gets all of the tax money back when either the person moves out of the house or it's sold for whatever reason. So we get that tax money back plus the interest that's applied to it.
Great. All right. That's it. Thank you, Ruth. Really appreciate your time. That takes us to Article Six, which is an article related to Community Preservation Act funding. And the article reads, "To see if the town will vote to appropriate a sum of money in the amount of $70,000 from the Community Preservation Historic Resources Reserve for the acquisition and restoration of the town's third motorized fire apparatus, a 1926 American La France, to parade quality, with said funds to be under the control of the Fire Department and to be expended before June 30th, 2026, unless a majority of the Community Preservation Committee votes to extend the deadline." And of course, there's a similar motion that's associated with that that would move the Town Meeting votes to appropriate the $70,000 for the apparatus. So I'm pleased to be joined this afternoon by the Fire Department's Operations Manager, Joe Milos. Joe, welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
So Joe, you've been working on this for several months. We've gone through a process that has included the designation of this 1926 American La France as a historic asset of the community by the Historical Commission, and we have received the Community Preservation Commission's authorization and recommendation to have this item on the warrant and be approved by Town Meeting for $70,000. So I'll turn it over to you to talk about the piece of equipment and its historical significance with the community.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar. So as you explained, this is an antique piece of fire apparatus that belonged to the town. Actually, a little bit of history on the truck. Truck was a 1926 American La France Type 65, which is the model on it. It was actually delivered to the town on July 23rd, 1926. It was in service here in town until 1956, at which time after that, the truck had been sold a few times. It went, in 1956, it was sold to the American Legion Hall in Needham. It ended up in a private collector's hands in 1973. In 1979, another collector had purchased the truck. In 1996, it actually ended up in even a third collector. And then now, at this point in time, since 1997, it's belonged to one gentleman down in Texas, Mr. Tim Treadway. When the CPC had originally started kind of talking about some of the historic projects they were looking to try to do, they had been reached back out to us, actually, and we gave them this gentleman's name. He's been a resident of Shrewsbury up until, actually, the late '70s when he moved. And he's had this truck as a momento, is what he calls it, from living in town. So the truck actually has been down in Texas since 1996. He's owned it, 1997, I should say. With his endgame of the truck was always been to donate it, to get it back to the town for the 300th tricentennial celebration in 2027. So what we were looking for and what we went to the CPC for was funding to take the truck from its current state, which we'll get to. He has brought it to the point where it's mechanically safe, so it does run and drive like it's supposed to. It does pretty much everything it's supposed to do between pumping water, driving down the road. Most of the equipment he has found over the years and brought and put back on the truck for a period, correct. He's got a bunch of spare parts that do come with the truck, along with a complete spare engine, actually, that comes with the truck. So just a few quick pictures of what it actually looks like right now. Picture to the left there is actually the truck pumping water when he first put it back together. Couple very recent pictures of it, actually, he took out in the backyard behind his house. As you can see, the truck is all in one piece, but cosmetically, it's not been brought up to what it should be for a restoration of that type of vehicle. So what we're looking to do with the money, if approved, is to finish what he started, basically. So to complete the restoration on the truck, the engine needs a little bit of freshening up to get some stuff squared away on that. It's got a few little water leaks and a few other things. To repair the body damage on the truck and to repaint the truck and to re-letter it so that it actually looks like it did in that first picture from 1926 when it came to the Town of Shrewsbury. So to get it back to exactly what it looked like. There will be a few other mechanical items, brakes, wiring and stuff that will probably need a little bit of work, and that's where some of the other part of that funding will go. And then there's the seat, the hose bed cover, tires, just some stuff that needs to be basically replaced to bring the truck up to its final point, to the point where the truck could be used to run in parades, could be out at community events, which is the goal of what the gentleman who now owns the truck wants. He wants it back to the Town of Shrewsbury to show people the history. This actually is the third piece of fire apparatus the town ever had that was motorized. We have the two original hand-drawn units actually already now back at the fire station. Those had been donated several years back from Harvard University, actually, when they found them in the Adamus Ward House. So this would be bringing back the first piece of motorized apparatus that's still in existence from what we can find with looking through records. The other two trucks, there's no history of them still existing. This is the only one so far that we can find that actually still truly exists that was back out there, so.
That's great.
So that's what we're looking to do with that funding. If anybody has any other questions on it, we can definitely help them out.
Yes. So let's talk a little bit about acquisition. So I know Mr. Treadway is so generous that he wants to give us the truck. Within the CPC, there's a broad definition of acquisition, so we need $9,500 for acquisition. But what actually is that $9,500 going to be used for?
So yes. So the $9,500, which is being considered for acquisition of the vehicle, is actually the shipping charges to get the truck, along with all of the spare parts the gentleman has up here with it. It is a fairly large number for shipping something, but what you have to look at is he has the truck itself and three other pallets of equipment, engines, spare parts. So it's going to basically take up an entire 53-foot trailer to get it up here. So unfortunately, normally, if you were going to ship something like that, you could put a couple of different vehicles on it, but this is going to take the whole truck. So cost to actually ship the truck up is what that $9,500 for the acquisition is for.
Okay. And so the balance of the funds, so a little over $60,000 would be used for restoration. How do you envision the restoration going? And what are your general thoughts on, you know, $60,000? Will it be enough to get us to where we want the equipment to be?
Yep. So rest of the money on the truck, and the reason we're trying to get it up here as soon as we can, is to get the truck actually physically here to be able to see for ourselves what condition everything is in. Mr. Treadway has been very generous, and he's taken a bunch of pictures, actually, and he's working on some other videos that he wants to point out everything that he knows still needs to be done to the truck. That $60,000 was a rough number that we put together to get, basically, to get the truck up here, take it completely apart, and kind of start from the bottom side of it back out so that you paint as much stuff as you can, put everything back together, and leave it so that the last few items, if you're not quite there yet, we can do those at a later date. So to get it completely 100% mechanically sound, painted back up to the point of what it should look like, I think the $60,000 should get it pretty close. Unfortunately, without actually having it here, I can't guarantee that, but I think that should get us pretty close to where we need to get it back to where it should be.
What are you targeting for a timeline with regards to that restoration?
I think it's going to take us all the way till probably 2027 to get it officially, you know, back together. I think 2026 is what the CPC has for a funding cutoff date. That actually is probably a pretty close estimate. I think by the end of calendar 2026, we should be pretty close to where we need to be with a few possible small projects that need to be done after that.
And where would this truck be stored long-term?
Long-term, right now, we have designated a space in the basement of Station Two. There's a space where the ambulance used to be stored before it's now been brought upstairs to where it is now in its current position in the second bay, which is enough space to actually fit the truck down there. And it is temperature-controlled and dry and out of the weather, so it's a suitable place for the truck to be stored.
Wonderful. All right. Well, this is a really interesting and exciting project, and I appreciate all the time you've put into it, and we look forward to having the conversation with the Finance Committee and Town Meeting in the coming days. So thank you very much, Joe, for taking your time.
Thank you.
So that will take us to Article Seven, and I'll invite Animal Control Officer Keith Elms up. Keith, you can come up and join us over here, and we'll talk about some adjustments that we want to make to the general bylaws. So Article Seven reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Section Six in Article 14 of the Dog Control Bylaw of the general bylaws or take any other action related thereto." And then the proposed motion really is a kind of a red-line version of the existing bylaw and the changes that we want to make. So Keith, welcome. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Maybe just provide an overview of the changes that you're proposing that we make and the outcomes that would come to fruition if they are made.
Sure. So in 2018, Mass. General Law, Chapter 140, Section 173A, was amended, and it raised the minimum fines for violations related to animals at a bylaw or ordinance level, and basically set the schedule at 50 for first offense, 100 for a second, 300 for a third, 500 for a fourth or subsequent. And it allowed cities and towns to, I'll read it verbatim, notwithstanding the foregoing procedure and schedule of fines, but subject to all of the provisions of this section, a city or town made by ordinance or bylaw provide for alternative procedure and a different schedule of fines, provided, however, that fine shall not be lower than those stated in this section. So Shrewsbury, ours are still at 25, 50, and 100 for first, second, third, and fourth and succeeding. So by updating to the minimum fine schedule within the Mass. General Laws, it'll bring us compliance with that 140, 173A.
Great. And then there's one other change associated with the hearing authority for matters related to nuisance and dangerous dogs. So what change are we looking to make there?
Correct. So currently, the Town's bylaw, Article 14, it defines the Town's Hearing Authority, which is the body that holds hearings, nuisance or dangerous dog hearings under Chapter 140, Section 157, as the Select Board. So judging by Chapter 140, Section 136A, it defines a hearing authority as selectman of a town, mayor, city, officer in charge of the animal commission, chief or commissioner of a police department, the chief or commissioners designee, or the person charged with responsibility of handling dog complaints in a town or city. So by removing the Select Board term and just replacing it with Town's Hearing Authority, it would give us a broader options of who would hold the nuisance or dangerous dog hearings within town. So as you know, time goes by and things change, it will give the town a lot more flexibility in regards to holding those hearings.
Great. Awesome. So two pretty straightforward changes that really bring us in alignment with what we're required to do and what we may be able to do under the general laws. So appreciate you pointing these out and look forward to going through the rest of the process with you. Thanks for coming in, Keith.
No problem. Thank you.
All right. So Dave, that leads us to two final articles that are on the warrant. That would be Articles Eight and Nine. They're really similar in context. They relate to being able to adjust the general bylaws and the personnel bylaws. Could you just provide some details on those?
Yeah. Mostly, these are cleanup articles, and they allow us to, as we make adjustments to the bylaws, or there may be some subsequent notes or relation aspects, subnotes within them, and we may miss some of those numberings. And this change will allow the town clerk the authority to go in and make those corrections to those bylaws. So the first, Article Eight, moved the town to vote to amend the general bylaws, Article Four, Subpart 4M, by inserting a new Section Seven there and to read in the printed posted warrant. And it allows, again, as I mentioned, the town clerk to make non-substantive administrative changes, to add numbering and lettering to the general bylaws in order to make numbering conform to the format of the bylaw which was voted at Town Meeting.
Sure.
And again.
I think where we've seen this most directly or an example of that is, Dave, as you mentioned, sometimes we add a section or delete a section to the general bylaws, and when we do that, that may cause the rest of the bylaws or that particular article to be adjusted, up or down. And sometimes we don't pick up each and every one of those in a red-line version that goes to Town Meeting, so we'd be able to make changes.
Yeah, the referencing of articles. Yes.
Correct. Yep. And then, so that's Article Eight, and then Article Nine is very similar. And it just, this one applies to the personnel bylaws, so it gives the town clerk the same kind of administrative authority over numbering and renumbering and other changes like that. Folks will probably remember that we've made this change to the zoning bylaws recently. So we're just now doing the general bylaws and the personnel bylaws, which are three separate documents, so.
And we have to identify those separately. We can't have, yes, correct, the clerk authority on all three separately.
Right. So that quickly takes us through all nine warrant articles that are proposed for the October 16th, 2023 Special Town Meeting. Town Meeting will start at 7:00 at the Oak Middle School. Town staff, members of the Select Board and the Finance Committee will be in attendance to answer any questions that may occur to Town Meeting members in order to provide you with the information that you need to make your decisions related to these articles. The Finance Committee will be holding their public hearing the evening of October 5th at 7:00 PM. That will actually be at the Shrewsbury Senior Center, and that will be replayed throughout the days between their public hearing and the Special Town Meeting on the 16th. So please be sure to review that in advance of the meeting. Documents will be mailed out to Town Meeting members on Friday, October 6th, and will be posted to the Town website. So be on the lookout for those documents and hard copy in on the website if you're a Town Meeting member as well sometime early the following week. So on behalf of David Snowden, we appreciate you taking the time to learn a little bit more about the October 16th, 2023 Special Town Meeting Warrant, and we look forward to seeing you there. Have a good day. and we look forward to seeing you there. Have a good day.